Good evening. It is great to be back. Welcome to our Monday, August 21st, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, if you could just take a second and flip your phones to silent, and then when you're done doing that, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Mr. Hatfield.
All right. My pleasure. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Rousch.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is present. Treasurer Lotterbach is not here. Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Ringgold.
Here.
Member Horowitz.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item two in our agenda, we have a consent agenda. 2.1 is the approval of the minutes from July 17, 2023. 2.2 is a list of staff that are being recommended for hire, and we'll come back to that in a second. 2.3 is a list of staff that have announced their resignations, as well as their effective dates. Item 2.4, the financials are not available for approval until the September Board of Education meeting. Item 2.5 is a list of legal bills for approval. And coming back to our list of hirerees, we have tonight with us Ms. Yang Chow. Welcome. If you want to take a moment, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to meet you here. It's my pleasure and honor to take this new position as the new Director of DEI. I originally come from Shanghai, China, a city slightly bigger than Midland.[124.81][124.81][laughter] I received almost 10 years of my postgraduate education here in the States, so I think it's time for me to give back. My comfort zone has always been in teaching for colleges, but I'm passionate about kids and Midland Public Schools, too. So, I mean, DEI is hard work. I mean, it's a work with a lot of controversies, the work with a lot of resistance. Any fight against the established status quo is not going to be difficult, is not going to be easy. So, but I'm passionate, and we will see, you know, what we can do to change, even just little by little, and maybe hopefully there's no fight at all. You know, if we could solve things peacefully. I've been an international peacekeeper when I was working for the United Nations. So, let's see what we can do together. And thank you so much in advance for being so patient with me as we navigate through this territory. And I'm very, I really look forward to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I will accept a motion for the consent agenda. I make a motion to approve items 2.1 through 2.5. It's listed in the consent agenda. Support? Motion by Mr. Rousch, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have presentations to the board. We have item 3.1. Penny Miller Nelson.
Bridgette, come on up. I mean, the spotlight really needs to be on you.
No stranger to the spotlight.
We'll stand right here, okay? So, I'm so excited to announce that Bridgette is our Michigan Region 4 Teacher of the Year, and it is such a special occasion when one of our own is recognized outside of our local district for being exceptional. We are so proud of you. You should know that...
Come right here.
This is awkward, isn't it? Yes![262.01][262.01][laughter]
You can stand here.
You should know that on August 8th, Bridgette was recognized by the State Board of Education and State Superintendent Dr. Michael Rice actually gave her a lovely award in front of a great crowd and lots of pictures. Her family was there. It was a wonderful celebration. You should also know, an interesting fact, that Bridgette has been earning distinction since the beginning. She did her student teaching here at Parkdale Elementary, and during that time in 1992, she was honored as the CMU Student Teacher of the Year. So, even in the beginning, she was exceptional and has hung with us since. You spent a bit of time downstate because we didn't have any openings right after your student teaching. And then Brad Vander Veleet, who's the principal at Parkdale, called her and recruited her to come back, and she was excited to return. We're so glad she did. Four years at Parkdale, then to Northeast, where she stayed there through 2017.
Correct.
And then at Dow High, where she's been since. Always part of our Special Services Department, always serving our students with cognitive impairments. And I am going to look at my notes for this part because these words are lovely, things that colleagues, parents, and friends have said about her. She has boundless enthusiasm. You are a nurturer, highly collaborative. You're a leader, an advocate for students and your colleagues. You are deeply caring, dedicated, trustworthy. And then I shared this one in opening session, but it's worth sharing again, that you have a zeal to help students progress in their skills. So, these are all ways that Bridgette has been described, and now we can add to the list Michigan Region 4 Teacher of the Year. You've seen this before.[376.87][376.87][laughter] Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yes. If you're on the podium, go ahead.[384.22][384.22][applause] Bridgette has just a few words to share with us, and we'll describe a little bit about what this experience means for her.
Thank you for inviting me here this evening. Being named Regional Teacher of the Year has been an exciting journey. Since being granted the award, I've been recognized by the State Board of Education. I've been asked to join the Special Education Advisory Council, as well as the Michigan Teacher Leadership Advisory Council. I'll be presenting at the CMU Teacher Candidate Conference and participating in the Delta, Kappa Gamma Society Conference for key women educators, and that's just in the first six weeks of school. But all of the buzz and the busyness, the title's been a humbling experience. My immediate thoughts were, why me? Perhaps it was because I've taught for over 30 years. Perhaps it's because I've taught at all three levels, the elementary, middle, and high school. Or maybe because I've dedicated myself to teaching students with special needs. But the more I thought about it, it occurred to me that I know why I was selected. I was in the right spot at the right time. I feel like my career could be a chapter from the book "Outliers" by Malcolm Gladwell. The author makes the case that talent and hard work are not enough. True outliers also need family, culture, community, and some plain old good luck. So, I'd like to take a minute to thank those whose impact on me made this award possible. First, I would like to thank my parents, who were both teachers for over 30 years for good rich public schools. My extended family, for your support. And my amazing husband, Joe, who's helped me every year with preparation for the new school year and has never complained when date night involved sharpening colored pencils, designing bulletin boards, shopping for materials, or feeding mealworms. I still remember the elated feeling when I was first hired and offered my dream job at Parkdale Elementary. Over the years, I've been so fortunate to have top-notch paraprofessionals in my classes, amazing teachers to co-teach alongside of, and strong leadership from administrators and the school board. For a large portion of my career, I've worked with a cognitively impaired program, and I've had students for multiple years. This has given me opportunities to build strong relationships with families and students. It was the Grace@Dow Library that drew me to Midland in the first place. And the city of Midland provides tremendous support for our MPS families. I've worked closely with Disability Network, the Ark of Midland, Michigan Rehabilitation Services, and the MSU Extension. As you've heard, all of these occurrences and interactions have made me who I am, and working in a district such as Midland Public Schools has been a blessing. I take my responsibility as Regional Teacher of the Year seriously, and I'm honored to represent the CI Program, Dow High, Midland Public Schools, and the region surrounding us, while working with the state to share feedback and input on educational policies and propose ways to enhance student learning. I would also like to take this time to personally thank Superintendent Miller Nelson for all of her support as she has shown me over the years. MPS is fortunate to have you as our leader. I'd also like to thank Principal Cochran for getting Dow High off to a great year, and Superintendent Jaster for all of your support over the years as well, and for the school board for your service and for acknowledging me this evening.
I told Bridgette part of her honor is that she can leave right after her presentation.[630.77][630.77][laughter]
Thank you for being here.
Thank you again.[635.37][635.37][applause] Okay. Next up, item 3.2. We have a host of wonderful presenters, two that are going to tell us about summer programming. So, Jen Servos and company, you are welcome to take the floor.
There you go. Sure. There you go. All right. Yes. So, good evening. Again, I'm Jen Servis. I'm on behalf of myself and members of the curriculum team are here. We have principals and teachers. We would like to thank you for having us this evening, and we are really excited to share with you the comprehensive summer program that MPS offered this year, beginning in elementary school and running all the way through high school. Next is Joe Amabaly.
Good evening. My name is Joe Amabaly, and I have the honor and privilege of talking from 50,000 feet in the air of the summer school vision and just a testament to everybody here who's presenting in the next 15 minutes to the work that's went into making this a valuable experience for our students. Just, I think, one of the biggest focuses has been student engagement and just the overall whole-child focus on students this year. I think every year, we look for better ways to improve the summer school experience, and this year, I think they knocked it out of the park again. So, again, multiple learning modalities is what we want to focus on. At the elementary, they incorporated some mindfulness into what they were doing. There were thematic units at the middle school, and then the high school is going to speak to some of the different ways they use technology as well. And I just do want to mention that transportation was available again this summer, and breakfast and lunch was served daily in most buildings as well. And I'm going to hand it over to Kim Funnel now.
I'm just going to explain the different funding sources that went to support our program this year. Title 1, we, as a district, share those funds with Central Park and Plymouth. So, those funds were only spent at those buildings. 11T was a federal fund that was given to Midland Public Schools, along with many, many schools, in a package with ESAR monies. And so, that particular fund has some parameters around it. We are held to spend a certain percentage during the year, a certain percentage after-school programs, and a certain percentage during summer school programs. And then, we can only spend that money on a particular group of students that qualify based on a list of qualifying factors. And then we had Section 31A. It's a state at-risk fund that went to support many programs at all of our buildings. In this past year, State of Michigan offered a Section 98C, which was a learning loss grant. That, again, was left over ESAR II funds. So, as that pot of money expired, the state did not want to give back to the national level, so they repurposed some of those funds, i.e. 98C. So, we were thankful for those monies as well. And then to round out our summer funding, we had Section 41A, which is a bilingual grant. And we were able to partner with the Legacy Center. I'll touch on that a little bit more, but we utilized those funds for a specific population of students, and we really were able to touch many, many students across the district with all of these fundings. And next.
All right. So, I will kick off talking about what elementary looked like. So, our summer learning program in elementary started the second week of June, and it ran through early August, with the exception of the two weeks in July. We had 419 students participate this year, 40 more students this year than last year. So, we were really pleased with that. We had 52 teachers participate and 26 paraprofessionals. Like years past, the main focus was English Language Arts and Math. Either, you know, teacher recommendations on students to participate. We also took a close look at NWEA scores as well throughout the year. I think, as Joe mentioned earlier, there was an SEL component this year, so the SEL specialists were able to support in the elementary buildings throughout summer school, which was a huge asset, very well received. We had a few different learning models. So, the majority of elementary schools used a tutoring or small-group instruction model, where, you know, up to maybe three students would come for an hour at a time. Some had an hour and a half, some two hours, and students rotated through that way. Central Park offered a more traditional-type summer school model. They found last year, the feedback from families was that it was hard with an hour here and an hour there. They were looking more for the 8:30 to 1:30 experience, and so they went back to that model at Central Park this year, and it was very well received. Lots of really, really great feedback. So, that was great, that we were responsive to that. And all in all, we had 90% attendance across the board in elementary school for the summer learning experience, which I think is pretty phenomenal. When you take into all of the other things that happen during summer, families really did prioritize this learning for their children. So, that was exceptional. In addition to that, Central Park and Plymouth also offer what they call kindergarten readiness. And so, Kara Stark is here, principal from Central Park, to share a little bit about what that experience was like.
All right. Good evening. As Jen mentioned, I'm Kara Stark, the principal of Central Park Elementary. I have the honor to talk about kindergarten readiness program. So, we have Title 1 funds at Central Park and Plymouth, and a few years ago, some of the staff members at Central Park started discussing the need for more support for transitioning students into kindergarten. It can be extremely overwhelming. The teachers need more supports of kind of getting them into a routine and being able to support them, you know, whether they need a visual schedule to support them, whatever it may be. So, we decided that to help those kiddos, we reached out to local daycares. We were speaking with parents when they enrolled their students, and we just determined to use Title 1A funds to do a kindergarten readiness program. It was a week long, and we tried to do it from 9:00 to 1:00. So, it wasn't overwhelming. It wasn't a full day of school, but it was right, the first, it was last week, so, or a couple of weeks ago. So, it was leading up to that first day of school. It was a specialized experience for just kindergarten. Our kindergarten staff were the ones who were able to run that program. So, our teachers actually got to know each of the students really well and be able to see what supports we could assist them with. We had about 17 students at each school, Plymouth and Central Park. So, that meant we were able to have small groups, which was really nice to be able to get to know the kids and ease them into that huge school. They were able to walk down to the lunchroom. What does the cafeteria line look like? How do I order my food? How do I get into school? Some of those worries that kiddos have when they're first coming. We also were able to provide transportation, so that was huge, to also allow kids experience on a bus. How do I get onto the bus? How do I get off? All of those things. We were able to also staff kindergarten readiness program. We had kindergarten teachers, family intervention specialists, behavior intervention specialists, and our paraprofessionals. So, that was extremely nice to be able to kind of just wrap around those kids. And we tried to select students that truly needed that support with transitions. Some kids are ready to walk into kindergarten and start on day one, but others might need a little more support there. We also tied in a parent component to this. So, we were able to, we had our SEL specialists there as well. And between our SEL specialists and our family intervention specialists, they presented to parents on just kind of how to develop and establish routines for your kindergarten child as they enter school, how, what reading may look like at home, zones of regulations, when, you know, any of you that have littles, they can have all the emotions, and that's okay, but just how to help manage those. And then also, our family intervention specialists were able to speak to what their roles are in our buildings. And like I said, we also tied in mindfulness. So, that was our program.
All right. And just to round out elementary, we sent surveys to students, to teachers, and to families asking for feedback, and I thought I'd share a few quotes with you. So, from teachers, they love the flexibility, the ability to schedule and plan specifically with families. Many teachers at Central Park loved going back to the traditional model with the small class size, felt like they accomplished quite a bit. And then, on the flip side of that, those that had the tutoring style, students were really engaged, loved the one-on-one or small-group attention that they received. From parents, they noted the great progress in reading that was made over the summer. My daughter loved being there and wished it was longer. So, we're doing something right. They really appreciated the bus drop-off and pickup and felt that that was really beneficial in helping their family and their students attend. And from students, I feel like I got better at math. We had to work really hard, but we got breaks, so it felt like it was just right. I liked it a lot better than when I was in fourth grade. In fourth grade, I got confused a lot, but at summer school, my teacher got to help me one-on-one, and it really helped. And then, last but not least, summer school was great. I got smarter. And on to middle school with Andy Philippeck.
Yes. I'm Andy Philippeck. This is my second year running the middle school programs, so both Northeast and Jefferson. This year, we had between about 130 and 140 students combined. We had, at each school, we had 11 teachers, two paras, myself, and also an administrative intern. So, one big shout-out needs to go to Morgan Matijewski, who's a teacher at Northeast. I think she's a graduate of Midland High. Her name then was Morgan Gru, but big shout-out to her because having an additional person at both buildings to help me out was awesome. At Northeast, not only, well, both programs, we like to do an hour of math, an hour of English, and a fun activity. So, each school picked a theme. For Northeast, they chose "The Amazing Race", and they wanted to bring some cultural learning into the program. So, the first day, they got passports, and then they would, the teachers made sure to incorporate different cultures into their lessons. We had a speaker from Uganda. We had a golf pro from Sandy Ridge come and do some free golf lessons for the kids. And they even had a salsa-making contest. So, it was kind of a very, it was an awesome program for the kids. At Jefferson, again, the teachers were awesome, great planning. They did an amazing job coming up with a theme for the kids, blast off into a new adventure. One of the things they did was to incorporate, make predictions about rockets, if they launched rockets, included graphing, included area, what kind of parachute would work best for these rockets. So, that was a cool thing that they did. They had a presenter from Cranbrook come and talk about water pollution. And then, we had a physics professor from Delta College come, and he talked, he did some great demos with optics, angular momentum, and standing waves, which included a strobe light. The kids really loved that one. But yeah. Oh, and then they went to the Chipewa Nature Center one day and did scavenger hunt. So, that was pretty cool for the kids. Some great feedback. You could read what's up there, but one really stood out to me was the summer school was great. People actually understood me. They knew it's hard for me to speak in front of others and understand that I have anxiety. Finally, people are really nice here, especially the teachers. So, it just meant a lot to see that. I know that's one kid's feedback, but someone that experiences anxiety and it really helped them out to get to know the school, get to know the teachers, and just feel welcome. All right. Up next, we got high school.
That sounded awesome. All right. Good evening. I'm Scott Cochran, principal at Dow High School. So, thanks for taking a few minutes to talk with us tonight about summer school. At Dow High, we really focused on a data-informed model as far as who was participating. In summer school, we had five teachers supporting 47 students, so the teachers recommended students for participation. We reached out to families, they reached out to families, I should say. And we were looking specifically at students needing support in math and English, and then the form of instruction was through small groups. So, over the course of the summer, we had 38 and 1/2 credits that were earned. Now, these are credits towards graduation, taking off boxes on the graduation model that our students need to achieve. Of those, just over 20 English credits and 18 math credits. So, these are credits that the students were short on going into the summer and then, of course, coming out. Not only did they earn the credits, but they also achieved success in the class, which is probably just as important. And we don't have quotes up here, but it was interesting hearing some of the feedback from a number of the students. We're talking about the way that they would approach interacting with their teacher definitely next school year, this upcoming school year that starts tomorrow, and also their pace of work. How, they recognized the importance of the consistency of getting their work done. So, I thought that was interesting. I listed a number of the courses that students earned credits in English 9, American Lit, Literature and Language, so pretty much the entire English sequence, Algebra 1, Geometry and Algebra 2, the core math sequence, and there were a few other classes as well. Now, I'm presenting because, you know, I'm here to talk to you tonight, but I was not involved in this program at all. I didn't become the principal until July 1st. This all happened in June, so I want to make sure the credit goes where credit is due. Our previous principal, Ted Davis, kind of led the charge, and of course, it couldn't have happened without the teachers. And I listed them here for you because the teachers are our heroes. Brent Chambers, Sharon Kaczelski, Tom McNamara, Sarah Pirrett, and Jason Watkins. You know, they spent the time with the students there four days a week, helping them design targeted, specific lessons for them, and did a great job. We put down the logo, "Success for All", and our students were successful. Walked away from the summer with additional credits, but also feeling good about themselves and their ability to be successful in school coming into this school year. So, it was a good experience. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Tila Sherman. I'm the principal at Midland High School. My perception of summer school is a little bit more anecdotal, and Amy Guzman, who was our summer school supervisor, will provide more specific data. We approached summer school with the lens that many of our students, we had a pretty high failure rate, no more than normal in any school, but we had a high failure rate where we really wanted to get kids credit to get back on track to graduate. Our focus certainly was freshmen and sophomores, but we did have juniors and seniors that engaged in summer school, and many of them got back on track to graduate on time. So, that was really our intent. It was, both high schools, I believe, we did a summer school from June 5th to June 29th, two sessions a day. So, we had a three-hour session in the morning and a three-hour session in the afternoon. Some students, most students, accessed both sessions[1668.81] Some students, most students, accessed both sessions to make up those credits. The beauty was that we were allowed to, because there wasn't any construction, thank you, we were allowed to run it, and it matters. It matters to teachers, it matters to students, especially when you're trying to build and maintain a culture, that we were able to run summer school in our own building. The comfort level, both from teachers and students, was substantial, so I appreciate that effort. We offered a variety of courses face-to-face. We put out, like, an APB to all teachers, anyone interested in teaching summer school in January. We were taking all, because we had students that had failed across the board in a variety of classes. So the student, or the teachers that were hired to teach summer school, we were able to fill their courses, all the way from Algebra 1 up to, or to US History, so it was a variety. The classes that we weren't able to offer face-to-face experiences, I believe that face-to-face experiences are magical and really important. However, we needed to get kids back on track to graduate as well, so I groveled if we could maybe offer some virtual options with support by Amy, and we also had a special ed certified teacher in there as well, take some edgenuity courses that we weren't offering face-to-face. If we offered it face-to-face, they were put with a teacher, but if they weren't, if we weren't offering it, we put them with Ms. Guzman and Mr. Wagner. Seventy-five students were enrolled at the Midland High Summer School, and again, that's grade 9s through 12, current 12th graders. We had, Amy Guzman was our online facilitator, or she was an online facilitator, but she was also our summer school facilitator, and without her, our summer school program wouldn't have been as successful. One of the major reasons that our program is successful, I think both high schools, is that attendance is mandatory. If students don't attend, if they miss two days, they can't stay in summer school. And believe it or not, that is a significant motivator. Ninety-nine percent of our students stayed enrolled. I think we only lost...
Zero.
Oh, we only lost zero.
Zero.
Great.
One hundred percent.
One hundred percent. So, 100% of our students earned at least a half a credit. So a half a credit, for those of you that don't know, is a semester course. And so, we had some students coming in with substantial deficiencies, and we had some students coming in with just a half a credit or a point, or a full credit to recover. One thing I might note, I don't have quotes as eloquently as the others, however, by the time they get to this level, many of these students have already established a shame or a perception, and they function in traditional school with this shame, and it manifests in a variety of ways, but one could be avoidance, which a lot of our students who are at risk or are failing, they avoid class because they don't want to look or seem inept, right? And they're really trying to save face. Or it manifests in behaviors to, instead of looking dumb, they would rather get kicked out of class. And so these behaviors perpetuate, and they've established this, these are long behaviors, and so I'm really appreciative of the elementary and the middle schools really focusing on building culture and SEL supports, because it's going to help build that efficacy with those students. However, once they're at high school, in the structure that we had, it's a smaller class setting, of course, that's always beneficial, but we also used different assessment methods, so it wasn't your traditional testing, and we really honed in on essential standards. So you, in five weeks, it's tough to teach a semester-long in five weeks. But they focused in on, or teachers, before they taught that class, they identified essential standards, what do kids need to know in order to articulate proficiency in that class. Teachers really focused on that. But then they were very creative in the ways in which they measured success by these students, and they really allowed students to choose that, which was quite lovely, because so often, these students feel like they don't have a voice in the classroom. So I'm going to stop rambling, and I'm going to let Amy share some data, but I'm really proud of Midland High students. A hundred percent of our students gained at least a half a credit, so it's huge.
And with the attendance, hi, I'm Amy Guzman, I teach at Midland High School. Some of the attendance, like, a student may have lost their morning, but not their afternoon, so they were still able to recover that half credit, or vice versa. So we did have 100% success rate of all 75 students. We were able to recover, six students were able to recover 65 credits overall. In particular, some students are now a senior, they will be ready to graduate in May, so for Midland High School, so that's very much a celebration. Some of the courses that we offered, because we had the availability to offer ingenuity, would be French 1, French 2, Spanish, Survey of Spanish 1, Survey of Spanish 2, Geometry, Chemistry, Lifelong Fitness, Earth Science, Government, Econ, and those are just a few. The face-to-face, again, we did make sure we were looking at our English and Language Arts, as well as math scores, and as well as building those essential skills for this fall. In Algebra, Algebra 2, English 9, English 10, English 11, Biology, World History, US History, and then Health, a requirement for graduation. I do have some quotes through our student data that we collected at the beginning, and then their reflection at the end. One of the questions read, "Why did you attend summer school this year?" Because I had to. I didn't do the work. So much of my work wasn't turned in. I didn't go to school during the school year, and I missed a lot of school. We talked about what content they were able to pick up and their effort. Those were a couple of questions that we asked for post-data. What did you like most about summer school? Actually getting my work done and getting a good grade. It wasn't boring, the classes were small. Lunch, friends, it wasn't really that terrible. The people. What did you like least about summer school? Everything. Honestly, just all the tests in both classes, but I get it. It's necessary to know if a student is picking up a lesson, being taught. I'd like being here, being here instead of being home. I liked the short, I didn't like the short lunch. And these are just a few that I'll end with. What did you learn about yourself? That I can bike for a while. That I can do more than I thought I could. I'm determined to get through this time. Next year, it won't be a reason I don't show up. It's not that hard getting up in the morning. That I don't ever want to come to summer school again. I know more than I thought, I can stay consistent and work hard, I just need to focus. And then finally, what were some celebrations? I passed, getting my credit. That it's over. I did well in my post-test, I am passing, I'm back on track, grades and accomplishments.
Midland High also had the opportunity to do, similar to a kindergarten readiness program, we recognize that it's very difficult to transition from middle school to high school. We do, my math teachers have been voicing this for a while, that students coming into 9th grade, there's a substant, many students, there's a substantial gap, and many of them are not ready to jump into algebra. They don't have the fundamentals for, with regards to pre-algebra, to jump right into algebra, which is where we start. So we tried to think of something that we could get incoming 8th grade students engaged in. We had 14 freshmen attend, we invited 60. It's really hard to convince high schoolers to come to summer school, especially if they're not credit deficient yet. So they were given, there was two sessions, we had a substantial SEL cultural component, and that was run by our SEL specialist. And then we had the pre-algebra component, and they were broken up into two groups, and then they would flop at, after an hour and a half. And so they, similar to what was happening at elementary, we weren't teaching them how to get on the bus or off the bus, but we were teaching them where the cafeteria was and what, the fundamentals of what it means to have chemic pride, and this is how you represent yourself, and they also made a connection with a strong math teacher, as well as a strong co-teacher in that classroom as well. We did use NWA data to identify students that we targeted or invited. It was also based on 8th grade teacher recommendation, and the assistant principal, Keith Seibert, provided some feedback on who we should invite as well. But it was specifically students that were from Northeast. We didn't have the school-of-choice transfers yet, so it was just students that were engaged in academics or in school at Northeast. But this was pretty cool. They, we were allowed, again, groveled, I'm getting pretty good at begging, we were allowed to award these students a half of a credit, so these students are already ahead of the, of most of their middle school counterparts, because they got an elective credit if they participated in, if they engaged in this learning. So these students do have an elective credit, and so we're already getting them started on the right track, so it was very successful. I just would like more students next year, that's my goal.
Okay, as promised, I'm just going to touch on a bit of our multilingual learner English support program that we offered this summer. Again, we took teacher, actually, our tutor specialist's recommendation. We invited a lot of students to participate. We had 15 overall that took us up on that. We could have had more, but I did not have enough of our specialist's time. We did have John Mulvaney, who is our multilingual learner advisor. He offered tutoring support, and then three of our specialists that worked during the year. So many of them worked with students that they had during, during the school year. What was brilliant about this opportunity is that we partnered with the Legacy Center here in Midland. If you're not familiar, the Legacy Center does offer tutoring support, literacy support for not only youth, but adult learners in our community. So one exceptional highlight, actually a couple, but we were able to introduce the Legacy Center to our families, and so several of them signed up for tutoring support themselves. But one particular student, who is a rising 6th grader, he and his sister came in mid-year last year, and they are, they were refugees, and so I can only imagine what they've been through. But he was very resilient, very, very stern, not really wanting to engage, very little English skills. But when he met Mr. Mulvaney and realized that Mr. Mulvaney also works with his father, that, that really broke down a lot of barriers and right away established a very authentic relationship. So we're hoping for continued partnership with the Legacy Center and just, you know, growing those opportunities for not only our students, but our families. I think we have got one more slide? That's me?
Yeah.
Okay. What questions do you have for myself, or any one of our team members tonight?
This is such a wonderful, wonderful program, and you guys have really just, it's one of my favorite presentations, I look forward to, because it keeps getting better. Every year is better, 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 and I love it. With that in mind, and this is worthy of more compliments than, than we have time tonight, to be honest. But I just, the question that I have is, as we continue driving engagement and wanting to get numbers higher and higher, how do we get past 90%, 100%? What can we do to keep improving this program? Or what plans do you have to keep improving the program, maybe better stated?
Well, I would say that we will continue to lean on our data and really take input from our stakeholders and value what they want. Obviously, 90% attendance, you know, there's, there's buy-in there. 100% of our students at Midland High gaining, you know, a partial credit at minimum, so I feel, you know, as long as we have the, I'm looking at Superintendent Petty-Miller-Nelson, but as long as, you know, you saw the funding that, that went behind
Yeah.
the amazing work that our team presented you this evening. So we'll continue to work at looking for those supplemental pots of funds that will continue to provide these opportunities for our students and staff.
Wonderful.
I will add, can I add really quick? One of the things that we could do better in is, it needs to be part of our culture. It's still pretty new, and so it's the communication to parents and to students and to, it's, it's easy to opt out, if you will. And so if we can continue to make this a part of our ingrained culture, that if you're, at least at the high school, I don't know at the elementary or the middle school, if you are credit deficient, you, you have to do summer school, because graduating is not an option. And so continuing to articulate that message, I think, is relevant.
And I also think to add too, you know, we had talked, I think someone mentioned, it was last January, that we started to have conversation about building for this year, and people now are already like, "We're not waiting till January, we've got the surveys, we heard the students, we heard the families, we heard the teachers. What can we do new or different, or what tweaks do we need to make to make it even better next year?" So really leaning on, you know, the responses, you know, again, to Central Park's credit, you know, they really took to heart what families said last year, and restructured this year, and had an amazing program with even more students attending, so being responsive to that.
Excellent.
So I have a quick question to start, and then a probably more complicated question. First one is, are path students at the high school level, did your numbers include our path students, or are they on a separate track throughout the year?
That's a separate, it's a separate program completely, sorry. Go ahead, oh, you go ahead. That's a separate program completely. They get all year to engage in that work, and it's overseen by the principal of that program, Japha Flower. So these are students that are enrolled in our face-to-face programming.
Okay.
And one thing with that, remember, the students had failed that class before, so they were able to do a prescriptive test
Yeah.
to identify what essential standards they've already mastered, and then we were able to build their class off of that.
Okay.
Okay.
And then my, my second question is, I'm going to make a hypothesis that we have a high correlation between the students that are in summer school that also have an IEP or need Tier 2 and 3 MTSS services?
Not necessarily.
Is that, not necessarily?
No.
I guess my, for the students that do need those services, how are our partners at ESA helping us deliver the summer school program? And do they, do they provide support through the summer?
We don't ask for it. We use our, we use our special education teachers. So many of our courses, I don't know at Dow High, many of our courses were co-taught with a certified special education teacher, our own special education teachers. So we did that, I don't think we, I don't want to say we didn't need them, we just had, we have our own teachers and our own resources that we utilize that have relationships with our kids and the teachers that they're co-teaching with.
I would say, at Dow, I had to speak to what was happening. At Dow, we had special ed staff that were involved as well, in a similar fashion. We either co-teaching or working directly in small groups with the students, so I'm not sure that we saw ESA involved for that, for that instruction.
At the middle school, we had two special ed teachers each program. Do you want me to go up there?
Yeah.
At the middle school, we had two special education teachers for each program, and we had two paraprofessionals for each program to help with that.
So to sharpen that point, we'll just say ESA staff were not part of our summer school program, and to, to address your question about two Tier 2 or 3 support, separate from special education, that's part of why we really need to keep enhancing our tiered system of support. Those should be ways that we actually change the trajectory for students, so that they're earning these credits during the school year and not needing summer school. So we still have some work to do there. I mean, our ideal, I think we would all agree, is to have summer school be enrichment, not necessarily credit recovery in the secondary schools or students who are not yet proficient. We'd like it to be enrichment, but we're not there yet. And I think one area, to go back to Scott's question of how we can think about growth, we are right now, in some ways, limited by the number of teachers who are able to teach during the summer. We have great teachers who are giving a lot, but many of them want their summertime for other priorities. So we're a little bit limited in the number of students we can serve in summer school. Ideally, it would not just be students who are credit deficient at the high school, it would be those who may be just eked by, but still aren't as ready as they need to be for success in the next class, giving them that boost for even increased readiness for the fall. So we have lots of ways that we can keep growing and evolving our summer school program. Go ahead.
All of the funding that you listed, there are ESAR-related pieces to that, which will sunset. Do we have to start looking at general fund dollars to allot? Do we need a line item to start building so that we don't have any limits? We have limits in teachers, we cannot have a limit in funds, we have to be able to, if it's going to become cultural, you're going to change this, then we got to talk about dollars. And we have to start planning if we can grow those numbers and grow the teachers, so they take that limit out of it as well. I think we have to start looking at a line item for this.
Yeah, I don't think it's off the table to use general fund dollars. I'll make eye contact with Brian, we've had conversations about this. You know, we're really thankful that we're getting a fuller 31A allocation.
Absolutely.
And so those funds, actually, this is a perfect match for those funds, but to your point, lots of ESAR and other supplemental-related funds that are sunsetting, and we have to figure out what goes where. But this, summer, summer learning programs will always be a priority for us.
I just wanted to also say, in regards to the, the funding piece, I think that it is so critical, the identification that we're recognizing what families need, right? If they need transportation, that's part of what we're spending our money on in order to help get kids where they need to go. The food piece, the, the pride piece, the fun piece, the engagement piece, because I think that is what helps to change the, takes away that shame of, oh, you have to go to summer school, right? I can't tell you how many families I've talked to who have been like, "My kids love summer school." Like, it's great, it's great for our family, it's great for them, they're more prepared, they're ready, especially those younger kiddos. And so I just, I'm in awe that, I remember sitting there last year and listening to this and being like, "Whoa." And so just, again, kudos to all of you for developing a wonderful, wonderful enrichment program for our kids.
I also invited them to leave right after.
Okay, then. Okay, next up, we have item 3.3. This is Superintendent Leadership Focus, presented by our superintendent, Miller Nelson.
I'm going to stand here, because then I can make eye contact with you. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Like all fun things so far, right? I want you to know that I am really grateful and proud to serve and lead our entire school community here at Midland Public Schools. I noted that in my welcome back message to our school community and I shared that I want to be the kind of leader that works collaboratively in service to our students, our staff, our families, and our community partners. I also noted that leadership change can be challenging for individuals and for our organization. And at the same time, a leadership change can be really exciting and renewing and full of possibilities. And I'm working intentionally for that second part to be true, for us to see all the possibilities that we have ahead. At our opening session, I also shared the sentiment that being interim can also create just a little bit of a ripple, right? People aren't always sure exactly what to expect next and I certainly don't want folks to think that this is just a placeholder. I really wanna convey to you tonight again that I believe I am here to help move us forward in alignment with our vision. We have important work to do and if we are standing still, we're falling behind. So we really do need to keep moving forward together. We have a really powerful vision statement to lead with respect, trust, and courage to ensure an equitable, collaborative, and inclusive culture and to enable all to achieve success. It's important to me that you know I believe in this vision statement and I believe in our collective ability to achieve it. You can count on me and our great leadership team here and our leaders out in our schools to lead and serve in these ways with respect, trust, and courage. And I believe I can count on you as board members to do the same. Having this mutual understanding of how we as a governance team will work together is important so that we can achieve this vision and ensure success for all. I want you to leave this evening with a clear understanding and a feeling that there is strong, visioned, aligned, and caring leadership for our district and that there is a clear, focused, defined path forward for us this school year. I'm going to share with you a brief overview of my areas of focus as part of a leadership plan for the 23-24 school year. The three areas are community, student success, and leadership. These are the central themes of my service to Midland Public Schools. For each area, I'll provide a little bit more context. I'll give you an example of an action that I will be taking in each focus area. And then you'll see in the corner of the slide for each of these areas, a box that has accountability measures, ways that I will measure and you can hold me accountable to making progress. As you listen, I ask you to look for opportunities to support the various aspects of this plan and to think about ways that you can make it better, ideas you have for me to make it better. Community is the first area. To be a community, we need to need connection and communication among people. I will foster a trusting, inclusive, collaborative, and productive relationships that will strengthen our school community. This work happens with you as Board of Education members, with our students, our parents, our families, our staff, and our community partners. I will be visible, approachable, and engaged in the school community. One action I've already taken is to schedule, along with principals and our associate superintendent team, a series of monthly school visits. We are going to be out in schools even more than we already were. We're also moving our Monday morning leadership team meetings, called Agenda Meetings. It's an internal term we use. We're moving those out to schools. So rather than meeting here at the admin building, we're rotating through schools each Monday. This will include Brian and Jeff, Melissa and Jen, and our department directors, technology, HR, business, et cetera, so that we can all get out and see what's happening in schools. This is about us being seen together so that staff and students know that we're here and that we care and that we're engaged. And it's also about us keeping a pulse on what's happening in schools so that we can provide support when we see the need and make well-informed decisions. We will be looking for other opportunities as well to listen, to understand different perspectives and ideas and feedback from students and staff. It doesn't mean there will always be agreement, but it does mean that I can be counted to lean into situations and work through them with respect and to do that collaboratively. We are finding lots of other ways also to engage in the school community. I see lots of events on my calendar and I'm really excited to get out and engage with families and community partners. You might have heard we've already launched a staff survey. We did that last Monday. And that was to get staff feedback on specific topics related to culture and climate as well as communication. And we are level-setting on what the words "respect," "trust," and "courage" mean so there was an opportunity to provide input. That survey remains open for the next couple of weeks and we'll be digging into that data once the survey closes. One piece of feedback we've already heard fairly consistently is that we need to give a little more attention to communication across the district. We already have many great modes. Mike Sherrill put lots of great modes of communication in place. We just need to take that to the next level and really think about how two-way communication can happen across the district. So we are right now engaged in the early stages of assessing our current communications plan and developing a refreshed approach. And we'll share more information about that in the coming months. I believe the culture we create and maintain as the adults in the system is important for our success and for that of students. So this year, we're really gonna tend to our culture, that working and learning environment that we're all in, so that we can be equitable, collaborative, and inclusive. Student success. Teaching and learning are clearly the heart of what we do and wherever we have an opportunity, we're gonna talk about that. We want to, we will maintain a sharp focus on student growth and achievement this year. We are an excellent school district. I think we all know that, so many ways, so many examples we can point to. And one of those is student achievement. We have dedicated, caring, highly skilled staff and we are in the top five percent of Michigan schools. We should be proud. And we also have students who are not yet achieving at the levels that we desire. We just heard that about summer school, right? So both are true and it's important for us to really embrace this reality and to dig in together to find new and better ways to reach each student and engage families, eliminate those barriers to success. Actions in this focus area of student success will require us to continue developing that tiered system of support that we just referenced with the whole child in mind. This means that we will continue the social-emotional well-being strategies that we have in place and we will continue the hard academic press that we have. We will adapt and rethink our curriculum, our instruction, our intervention, and our assessment practices to ensure that each student has an equitable opportunity to learn in a safe and inclusive culture and that they are excited to come to school. You've been listening a lot tonight, but I'm just gonna ask if I can take a little extra two minutes because I want to address that term equitable opportunity or equitable access. I wanna give some context so that we understand what it means in this example of student success, especially since equity is referenced a couple times on the slide. So I thought maybe giving an example would create a more vivid picture. Equitable access or opportunity to learn is really about considering what each child needs, what each student needs to be ready to learn and have access to that learning experience. It's giving them the best possible chance for success. It's us considering all of those pieces and then taking action. It might not be the same for the student in the next seat over or two seats over. So here's an example. We have a student and their family who are currently experiencing poverty and many of the associated challenges of experiencing poverty. How are we noticing that? How are we responding? Are we collaborating with the family and the student in positive, productive, and dignified ways to ensure that the student can get to school every day on time, that they have appropriate nutrition, that they have the necessary supplies they need, that they feel safe and cared for at school, and they're ready to learn? Are we considering that this same family might not have the capacity to help their child with homework every night because they're working evening or night shifts? And maybe that we need to adjust our expectations for homework? And that family's work situation might be a barrier to attending parent-teacher conferences or other school events. So are we thinking of different ways to communicate and stay connected with that family? And for the sake of my example, let's consider that this child has some academic challenges and is not yet proficient in math or literacy. And I just wanna point out, that is not a generalization. We recognize not every student experiencing poverty is also academically, experiencing academic challenges. But for the sake of this example, are we being responsive to the specific learning needs that that child has and at the same time, holding them to the very highest expectation to meet our academic standards because we truly believe that they can do it? Are we thinking about alternative ways the student can show their knowledge and skill to show that they have met that academic standard because that's what's best for them? Are we considering access to after-school supports and events that we know enrich learning, like tutoring, or robotics, or sports, or other clubs? You just heard us talk about transportation and food for summer school. Those are great examples. Those are just a few of the considerations and how we can take action to support that student in that example I gave. And that's what it means to really think about equity and meeting the needs of a student so that they have access to learning and can be ready for learning in the classroom. It's not easy. It's actually quite complex, especially when you have seven thousand four hundred-plus students and each of them might have a little unique need that we need to meet. And I know too, it's happening in pockets across the district. As I've said many, many times, we have amazing teachers who are very skilled and dedicated. But this isn't the responsibility of just a classroom teacher. It's our system responsibility, it's our district responsibility to really ensure that this is happening consistently across the board. So we need to deepen those practices and systematize them as part of what Midland Public Schools looks and feels like. This is focusing on our tiered system of support and really building out that continuous improvement model. It also connects with ongoing professional learning for all the adults in the system. So speaking of professional learning, another point on student success is that we are going to this year spend time more deeply embracing the fact that we too are learners. The adults in the system have to be learners. We're going to strengthen our structures through professional learning communities in our middle and high schools. And in our elementaries, we're engaging with a literacy leadership network. And I look forward to sharing more this year, or having members of our team share more about those collaborative structures later this year. Research and evidence-based practices are frequently emerging. There's new brain and learning science all the time and it really takes effort to stay current. So these professional learning structures are really helping equip us to stay on top of best practice, highly effective practices. And really, there are times where we're gonna get to a spot and we might not have a right answer in front of us. Some of these scenarios, especially those individual student situations, can be really tricky. So we're gonna need to just lean in, seek knowledge outside of ourselves, and be able to bring that back and network it through these professional learning communities and our literacy, leaning into literacy initiative. These structures will serve as platforms for connection, communication, learning growth, and ultimately as a structure that will increase educator agency. And I really believe that it's going to deepen our knowledge and skill, reinforce our collective commitment to student success and continuous improvement, and help us see all those possibilities ahead. The structures also require team goals and targeted actions. And we know that when we're part of an effective team, that's really accomplishing important work. It increases our sense of connection with our colleagues, our sense of community, our job satisfaction, and our well-being. So I see this very tightly linked back to the first area of focus as well. Again, we'll share more information about those structures soon. Leadership is the third area of focus. I'll serve and lead this district with integrity, courage, flexibility, and clarity to align and focus resources and optimize organizational efforts, ensuring high performance. I hope you can see, you know, the other two lengthy descriptions that these are connected back because leadership is critical to make the other two happen. But I kept this one in its own discrete focus area because it really matters that we tend to all aspects of our organization. You know, we typically wanna think about what's happening in a classroom or a school. But the things that happen here at central office and those underpinnings of the district structure really matter and make it all possible. So when we think about finance and technology, human resources, facility, food service, transportation, all of those really matter and so do the people who work in those departments. They are part of our team. So we're gonna tend to our organizational capacity and efficiency because it's important. When those pieces are optimal, the service and support to teachers and principals and students and families is optimal. And we have some really highly effective practices already happening. So we need to identify those and scale them across departments and we need to keep seeking areas for improvement and efficiency. One action item I've already started in this area is to carry forward with the facilities assessment process that was started last spring. Of course, in collaboration with the board subcommittee and with Brian, we've analyzed information and the input that we've gathered so far. We've really closely examined our needs. We're considering the future of our district and are in the process, as you know, of drafting this facility plan that will take us into the future. Lots of opportunities still for stakeholder feedback along the way. This is by no means a done project, but it is an important project that will set us up to continue providing the world-class experience that we know we want for students here in Midland. This focus area of leadership, again, connects back to community with connection and communication and culture in many ways. The critical responsibility that we have as a governance team can't be overstated. So in this area, I'm drawing attention to the fact that I will work to develop close, trusting, productive relationships with each of you as board members and with us holistically as a governance team. It's really important that we are aligned and connected in service to the district. Again, as I said before, we might not always agree and that's okay. I want us to be able to lean into dialogue and to seek understanding and one another's perspectives and of course, function from a place of respect, trust, and courage while we keep students centered in our work. All right, team, those are my focus areas. Know that it was an overview, there are more action steps and those will also be refined as we seek input. That staff survey, we intend to gather input from students and families and community partners that will all inform how we enact and take action around these three focus areas. I really believe that Midland Public Schools is a special place and I'm so proud to serve our school community. I have tremendous confidence in our team's ability to accomplish really great things this year and hold ourselves to the high expectations that I know you want us to have for ourselves and others in our system. So as we begin this new chapter, I ask you as board members to join me in stepping forward together into the bright space of collaboration and open communication, optimism, respect, trust, and courage, of course, and to see all the amazing possibilities that we have ahead. When we can work from that common space, we can move through the hard parts and I'm sure there will be hard parts this year, but we can move through those while keeping students and staff centered in our work. Thank you for believing and trusting in me to serve our district this year. What feedback do you have or questions might you have?
Thank you, Penny. That was great. The thing that I'm maybe most excited about, especially from a board perspective, is the more data-driven approach. As a parent, we get to see directly how our student is doing. And when we get the paperwork sent home, whether it's NWEA or other forms of data, it's pretty easy for us to tell exactly how our student's doing. What's more difficult for us as a board, I think, to measure is how the district as a whole is doing. We can see what we saw four or five months ago when we looked at the data for all of our students, but really to lean into that analytical approach and see where we even maybe need to reach outside of the traditional public school know-how to really measure success and know... You know, Brad's made the point a number of times, like when we align the budget to where we've, from a data-driven standpoint, had success, that's a really productive place for us to spend dollars. And communicate with our community and parents and other stakeholders about where we are having success and then be really transparent about where we're not having. and then be really transparent about where we're not having success. So to the extent that you need additional resources, especially financial resources outside of what we've traditionally done to do that, the deep data dive, I'll speak for myself in saying that I would support some additional look on that and something that we might want to consider bringing back to the board for review in the future.
Great. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Penny. We're really excited moving forward.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have an action item. This is our RFP for the Superintendent's Search Firm. And this is going to be presented by Phil.
Yes, so if you remember last month, we put in the Agenda Packet for Information in accordance with the Superintendent's Search Calendar that we had presented back in May or June.
Yeah.
That said, in July, we would issue to the board and to the public the Superintendent's Search Firm RFP. And this was drafted in cooperation with our attorneys at Thru, law firm. Present this for action tonight to actually approve that we actually go issue this Search Firm RFP.
Okay, I will accept the motion to approve the RFP for the Superintendent's Search Firm.
I'll move to approve item...
3.4.
3.4, the RFP for Superintendent's Search Firm Services.
Support.
Motion. Yeah, I'll get there. Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Ms. Ringgold. Any additional discussion?
Just some additional notes to highlight for both the board and the public. One of the sections of the RFP are RFP response elements. As listed, there are nine. Maybe just to add a little bit more color to that, I think we should discuss as a board, when we find the correct search firm, really look for somebody that demonstrates that the firm truly can develop relatively quickly, intimate knowledge of the district and our cultures and values of our community, current incredible testimonies from other districts that they've served, experience, particularly around size of districts, price, negotiation experience, and then a track record of really involving all of the community. I think that's one of the things that we highlighted during our calendar that we had laid out for the board to review was really be very transparent about collecting the voice of our teachers, our parents, and students, and all of our staff in the process to make sure that we find the right person going forward.
I've got a question, Phil. Is the Subcommittee responsible for making the ultimate recommendation back to the board?
So we... Help me out here because from a governance standpoint, we've been really particular about making sure that we bring everything back here for full discussion.
Okay.
So the Subcommittee really isn't taking any action. We're just kind of doing work and bringing it to the board.
You're doing the work. You'll be going through the vetting process of the RFP and then bringing the recommendation back to the board. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
I have a little bit of a nit because I thought it was an English teacher. In the background section, I just want to make sure that we're talking about based on the amenities of the small town field that we're referring to the organizations by their proper names because we have Center for the Art. So I just want to make sure that we're using that effectively because it's a search firm that takes that information and uses it. We want to make sure it's accurate.
We can, yeah, good point. We can definitely double-check those.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Just for board awareness, if I can add before we move on. So looking at the timeline that we put out, so September... So we did what we said we were going to do in August. In September, we said we would issue the RFP to various search firms and bring that back to the board. October, so really not any action for the full board to take in September other than to know that the RFP actually went out. And then in October, we would narrow it down from however many we issue to three and interview those firms.
Yeah, I think that's right. Okay, moving on. That takes us to item number four tonight, Request to Address the Board. And I only have one name on my list, and that is Mr. Joe Bonnades. Thank you for joining us tonight.
At the July meeting, I talked about the lack of a continuity of learning plan for 2022-23 school year. I thank Vice President Roush for explaining that the state no longer requires the creation of that document. Interesting, since ESER funds are still being used. I did have a chance to review the request for proposal for the Superintendent Hiring Services. Lots of legalese and boilerplate, but in the back was the background section for Midland. You have provided an over-the-top description of Sparkle City in this document, positive descriptions of large companies, all of whom are in cost containment and recent layoff mode. The part about places a strong emphasis on communication and community relationships was not aligned with calling the public various names and stonewalling issues that should have seen the light, like the recent plastic genitalia incident that had no legal follow-up action. And the final point about confidently passing bond issues is an amazing bit of hubris in these recessionary times as the recent failure of the Meridian bond issue might give you warning. What I am most concerned about is the lack of any expectation that the new superintendent will address the 35% of the students' population in the 31A at-risk pool. You are not looking for someone to sell a new car. We don't have a list of features that we want. We need to at least mention that this is not utopia. Which gets me to my final point. As I mentioned last week, we need to learn from the last three years and not repeat the same mistakes. There are strong rumors, news items, a few solid pieces of information that the government is going to go back into lockdown mode again. There are multiple studies on many aspects of what did and did not work and what was not true the first time around. I'm not going to make this into a political debate, but the part I will push is masks don't work. I can give you another summary of the literature on why masking asymptomatic people does not work, but you are crushing the souls of the students with masks. And you might not want to poke that bear again and go into auditorium-sized school board meetings when the mama bears wake up again. And if you quote "took a bribe" unquote by accepting ESER funds and are required to mask the kids, I would like to have that information on the public record. Thank you.
Okay, I know there were a few people that came in after the list was given to me. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay, we will move on then. Next up, item five, Finance, Facilities, and Operations. We have minutes that will be read by Mr. Blazy.
Yes, July 24, 2023 FFO minutes. The meeting was held here at the Midland Public Schools Administration Center. Present were Chairman John Lauterbach, myself, John Hatfield, Penny Miller-Nelson, and Brian Bruton. Guests were French &amp; Associates Dale Jerome and Barton Mallow, Jeff Atkins, Kelsey Burkmeier, and Daryl Ombrow. We discussed the Franklin property. Committee feedback was sought on the potential sale of the former Franklin School property. The sale presents the possibility of a partnership between Habitat for Humanity and the Midland Public Schools Building Trades Program. We also are continuing on with our facilities study. The committee met with the representatives from French &amp; Associates and Barton Mallow to continue discussions started at the June FFO meeting. Our next meeting was then in August, on August 7. Again, we met here at the Administration Center. Same people were present, Mr. Lauterbach, myself, Mr. Hatfield, Penny Miller-Nelson, and Brian Bruton. Also had French &amp; Associates Dale Jerome and Barton Mallow was Daryl Ombrow, Jeff Atkins virtually, and Kelsey Burkmeier virtually. As a committee, we discussed tax renewals. The committee feedback was sought on potential dates for renewals of the non-homestead and hold harmless millages. Administration will commence actions to place the items on the May 2024 ballot. Audit: The committee was given a general overview of the status of the audit. Audit: A full report by Yo and Yo will be delivered to the FFO Committee and Board of Education in September. Tractor bid: Administration will recommend ordering a Kubota tractor for use by the Maintenance Department. If approved, this would replace the current tractor that was purchased in 1979. Funds for the tractor were built into the 2324 general fund budget. Truck purchase: Administration will recommend ordering an F-350 pickup truck to be utilized by the Maintenance and Transportation Departments. If approved, this would replace the current truck that was purchased in 1994. Funds for the truck were built into the 2324 general fund budget. Facilities study: The committee met with the representatives from French &amp; Associates and Barton Mallow to continue discussions. Our next FFO meeting will be September 5.
Okay, thanks, Brad. As alluded to, we have a couple of action items. The first of which is item 5.2. This is the tractor purchase. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, Scott. As Mr. Blazy just pointed out, we have accepted bids and provided you with a tabulation in your board packet for the purchase of a tractor that tractors to be assigned to the Maintenance Department if it has your approval this evening. We recommend issuing a purchase order to the low bidder that was Lingal Equipment out of Saginaw, Michigan, in the amount of $31,384. And that's for a Kubota tractor. It's a four-wheel drive diesel with related accessories. And as pointed out in the minutes, that is replacing a model that was purchased by the district in 1979. This was budgeted for in our general funds.
Okay, thank you. I will accept the motion for item 5.2.
I move that we accept item 5.2, purchase of the Kubota tractor.
Support. Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush. Any additional discussion for item 5.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
celebration for that 1979 tractor.
I was just thinking, so...
It's an old tractor.
Yeah. So I'm pretty sure that might be the... I learned how to drive a stick shift while employed by Midland Public Schools in college. And that might have been the tractor.
You could bid on it in auction pretty soon. If I know it too, we might drive the price up just a touch.
Brian, item 5.3?
Yes, sir. We are also recommending this evening that we get your approval to order a 2024 F-350 4x4. This will be assigned to our Maintenance and Transportation Department if it has your approval. The bid comes from the State My Deal Bidding Program, and that price is provided by Lunghammer Ford of Owasso, Michigan. The total price is $54,168. And it will replace the current truck in the fleet that does the same functions. That truck was purchased in 1994 and is in dire need of replacement.
Okay, I will. Thank you, Brian. I will accept a motion for item 5.3.
Motion to approve item 5.3 for a purchase of a new 2024 F-350
Motion by Mrs. Ringgold, support by Ms. Horowitz. Any additional discussion for item 5.3? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, item 5.4 is information-only gifts totaling $4,300. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, sir. We have two gifts to acknowledge this evening, as you pointed out, totaling $4,300. One is from the Chestnut Hill PTO. They are providing Classroom Magazine subscriptions for the students at Chestnut Hill. The other is from the Miriam Plus Memorial Endowed Scholarship Fund, and that provides support for students to take dance classes. We will, per tradition, honor both of those donors in the credits of this meeting's broadcast and also through board correspondence. We certainly appreciate these generous donations on behalf of Midland Public Schools.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Next up is item six, Correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item 6.1 and 6.2 are both information-only. 6.1 is letters to the Board of Education and 6.2 is letters from the Board of Education. And the individuals listed there can be found on the agenda. Item seven is scheduled activities, and that is the list of our remaining Board of Education meetings for 2023 as well as a tentative list for 2024, noting there the budget workshops on April 15, 2024, as well as an organizational meeting and regular meeting on January 15, 2024. Moving on to study and discussion, closing out our evening tonight, are there any points of clarification before I turn the floor over to Superintendent Miller-Nelson for comments? Okay.
You've heard from me a lot, so I'll be brief. I just want you all to know that our teachers, of course, many have been in their classrooms over the summer preparing, but they were officially back last Monday and Tuesday for our opening session and then an afternoon and a full day on Tuesday of professional learning. This team over here at the table, we were all out. Some of us leading PD, Jen, and others of us just engaging. Some really, really great professional learning happening. Really proud of our team for stepping up. Big thanks to all of the people, again, I mentioned them earlier, who are behind the scenes, making sure that we're ready for the school year. Our grounds and maintenance team, our transportation team, you know, our HR team, still making some of those last-minute hires and getting those processed. Our tech team, making sure that everything's functional for our students. It's a really great team effort around here, so want to extend gratitude to them. And then, of course, students are back tomorrow. Lots of excitement around our community. We are really looking forward to welcoming back students for a great school year. Central Office staff will be out in schools every morning these next couple of weeks, just greeting families and students and providing support to principals and those teams. We ask folks to, of course, have a little extra patience these first few weeks. Bus routes are, you know, putting the final touches on. Nothing goes quite exactly as speedy as we want it to.